Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, July 28, 2020 at 6:00 PM. This meeting, we do have public participation at the meeting. Members of the public can attend in person or watch, listening the meeting live. You can view the meeting live on Channel 4 or view it at LHCaz.gov/TV. We are also receiving comments from the public for public hearings and the call to the public by emailing those items to cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. Again, that's cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, and we'll read those into the record. Or of course, folks that are attending in person can also speak at Call to the Public. We will now have an invocation by Pastor Andrew Cave from Lamb of God Lutheran Church.
Psalm 119. Forever, O Lord, your word is firmly fixed in the heavens. Your faithfulness endures through all generations. You have established the earth, and it stands fast. Let us pray. O Lord, our God, King of the universe, by your word you created the heavens and the earth, and by your word you sustain them. Teach us to trust in you and in your care and provision, both in times of abundance and in times of scarcity, in times of ease and in times of difficulty. Teach us to know your word, that through it we may gain a heart of wisdom, cause us to seek your will, to extend your justice and mercy to all, and to lead and govern according to your direction. All this we pray through your son, our Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you. And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by ASU Director Carla Harkel-Road.
Good evening, everybody. If you will all join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Carla. Welcome to Lake Havasu City and welcome to our council meeting. If you want to share a little bit about your organization and about yourself, that'd be great.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here, Mayor Sheehy. Yes, so again, my name is Carla Harkel-Road. I've been in Lake Havasu City since the beginning of April. I shouted my predecessor. Many of you may know Dr. Raymond Vanderrech, and so I shouted him for three months, and his last day was at the end of June. So I assumed the official role on July 1, and I'm really, really excited to be here. I come to you most recently from Portland, Oregon. I am an Oregonian, a native Oregonian, that is. I've lived up and down the west coast, and I've been working in higher education for close to two decades, if that's even possible. So about 17 years now, I've worked at a number of different kinds of colleges and universities, mostly public institutions. And in my career, I've primarily been focused on creating programs, departments, and structures that support student success and access to higher education. So that is a passion of mine, and it would be my passion whether it was my job or not. So it's very, very exciting to get to work in my field. At ASU Lake Havasu, we are looking to fall semester, as many of you may know. Classes begin at ASU for all of our campuses on August 20th, Thursday, August 20. And we are prepared to support students in a number of different modalities this fall in order to accommodate them during the pandemic, and we're really, really excited to do that. It pushed us to innovate and be creative, and we've done so. Our staff has done an exceptional job this summer. So we will be welcoming students to campus on August 15th. So we're very excited to do that. We do have a new faculty member joining us in kinesiology this fall, which is very, very exciting as well. So he's coming to us from the south, and he's on his way here, I believe, right now. So we're looking forward to welcoming him. We are also, as a side note, we are doing a renovation to our residence halls. We're building out some more space to welcome more students over time. We're really excited to be moving that forward, even inside of all of our work within COVID-19. So that's a bit of an update about ASU at Lake Havasu and a bit about me, and I look forward to connecting with many people, many of people in this city soon.
Excellent. Well, thank you again for joining us, and welcome to Lake Havasu City.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Jenny Koch. Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, before we move on to item five, I'll explain a little bit of what's happening here at the council chambers. So we're still going through the COVID-19 pandemic, and so we're able to meet citizens and council members where they're at. So we have a hybrid of a lot of different things happening. One, we have folks that can join us through Zoom, as we've seen with Councilmember Groth and Carla Harkel-Road from ASU. Otherwise, you can be here in attendance. Attendance is open to the public, and we're asking the public to please wear a face covering or a mask when they're in the council chambers. We've also installed plexiglass between council members at the dais so that we can have the face covering off so that people can see our mouth moving while we're talking, or of course, we can continue to wear it if that's what we're most comfortable with. We also moved the podium so that it is physically distanced, and people can address council during Call to the Public or the public hearings at the beginning. So we'll continue to do that so we can meet again our citizens where they're at and still continue to do the great work for the citizens of Lake Havasu City. And then also, it's with a heavy heart that I let you know that Councilmember Koch is not here this evening because she lost her grandmother just a day or so ago. So she is in our thoughts and prayers. And moving on then to item number five is the Call to the Public. We are still accepting input from citizens via email, again, at cityclerk@LHC.gov, no, excuse me, LHCaz.gov. Or if you're here in person, you can speak to the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. With that being said, we do not have any written comments, but would anyone like to address the city council at the Call to the Public? Seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item six is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like to make a motion?
Yes.
Like to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. And Councilmember Groth, if we could have your verbal vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item seven, Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is announce vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are a number of vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one pilot, alternate pilot member. Board of Adjustment, four regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one student member. Applications are available at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at www.LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the City Manager's Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just last Thursday, our Public Works and our Parks Maintenance Division assisted with our contractor working on the water conservation and reuse improvement project to make the final connections between the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant and the irrigation system at London Bridge Beach Park. Testing has been completed, and the London Bridge Beach is now being irrigated with treated effluent. The Island Treatment Plant produces a high-quality Class A-plus reclaimed water. By using it for irrigation, we conserve potable water for human consumption, and the city saves money. The project involved installing over 4,200 lineal feet of six-inch PVC purple pipe from the Island Wastewater Treatment Plant to London Bridge Beach Park, and intermittent valves along the way to allow for future connections to landscape along Sir Peter Gadsden Street as well as McCulloch Boulevard. The project was completed ahead of schedule, 82 days instead of 120 days, and most importantly, it was completed under budget. Nice work, Greg. A reminder that Lake Havasu City is holding a primary election on Tuesday, August 4th, for the purpose of electing three council members. The last day for early voting for the primary election is Friday, July 31st, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and you can do that at the Mojave County Library, which is located at 1770 North McCulloch Boulevard in Lake Havasu City. On Tuesday, August 4th, Lake Havasu City polling places are open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Registered voters can contact the City Clerk's office at 928-453-4142 to find their polling place on Election Day or to seek additional information. A reminder to our residents that the city has many options for residents and visitors to easily stay connected with city business and services while at home. City news, information, and videos are found on our city website, and we have a presence on most social media sites such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, YouTube, LinkedIn, and even Nextdoor. In addition, the city uses mobile apps called Havasu Now and Lake Havasu Police Department app that citizens can download on their smartphones and tablets. The Havasu Now app routes requests to appropriate city staff, tracks all activities on each request, and provides performance reports and notifications to managers. Examples of requests we get from the public include, but are not limited to potholes, street repair, signage repair, or placement, and code enforcement issues. Users simply open the application, select an issue, take a picture, and tap submit. The phone records the GPS coordinates for the exact location and sends that request directly to the appropriate city employee. We do have also multiple languages are available through the app. And then the Lake Havasu City Police Department app allows the police department to quickly disseminate emergency alerts and post news about missing persons, traffic delays, and crime reports. In the event of an emergency, app users receive instant notification via their mobile devices. Through the app, the Lake Havasu City Police Department can post photos and images, bulletins, a calendar of events, and even conduct community surveys. Citizens can use the app to send comments and crime tips anonymously and place calls to the police department with a touch of a button. Citizens can notify the department about suspicious activity and send images, including images of graffiti, through the app, and again, allows the residents to communicate directly with the law enforcement professionals. A word about COVID-19 in our community. Daily updates and information on COVID-19 cases in Lake Havasu City, our residents and those that are interested can always visit Arizona Department of Health Services at AZDHS.gov or Mojave County Public Health Department at MojaveCounty.us. This information is updated on a daily basis. We also continue to update the COVID-19 page on our city website and have added a list of current testing sites and available options in Lake Havasu City. Information on this and other COVID-related information on the city's website is LHCaz.gov/covid-19. The information you see on the slide shows the total number of cases in Lake Havasu City as of July 22. These are not active cases. These are cumulative total cases as reported by Mojave County. As you can see, most of the cases reported in Lake Havasu City have occurred this month, in the month of July. Just last week, Governor Ducey announced that the closure for bars, gyms, fitness centers, and water parks is extended to an uncertain date, but it is reviewed by the governor every two weeks. In addition, Mayor Sheehy extended the proclamation requiring face coverings in Lake Havasu City when inside a public space until September 1, 2020. Additionally, this proclamation requires the public to wear face coverings at public meetings. And finally, we continue to ask our residents to complete the census. You can do this by going to my2020census.gov or calling 1-844-330-2020. Since my last report, Lake Havasu City has increased our response rate to up to 61%. In comparison, the average in Arizona is 59.3%, Mojave County as a total is 56.7%, poll heads at 54%, the national average is 62.6%, and Kingman remains very, very strong at 72.1%. In closing, I'd like to ask that our residents be kind, remain calm, and stay healthy. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, move on to item eight, Public Hearings. We'll start with 8.1, a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License, The Views at Lake Havasu, 2110 Swanson Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Andrea Lukwitz has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for The Views at Lake Havasu, located at 2110 Swanson Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, hearing none. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in the live audience, we also did not receive any from our email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov, which again, we're accepting public comment for each individual public hearing or for the Call to the Public via email as well as local attendance or at the meeting. I will now close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for The Views at Lake Havasu, 2110 Swanson Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Groth, if you could give your verbal vote?
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License, No Name Public House, 2093 McCulloch Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Martin Navalis has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for No Name Public House, located at 2093 McCulloch Boulevard. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Williams? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in the local audience, and again, we did not receive any via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. I will now close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for No Name Public House, 2093 McCulloch Boulevard.
A second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is Approve Amendment Number Two to the Havasu Rivera Development Agreement with Raging River Management Corporation. Ms. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is Amendment Number Two to a Development Agreement. The developer approached the city and requested permission to install and maintain a gate and an entry station on property that the city from BLM. The purpose of moving the gate up closer to the main road, the parkway, is to ensure that vehicles, particularly those that are trailers with watercraft, don't turn down that road and then have to turn around in a limited or small space. In exchange for allowing the gate and entry station to be placed on the leased property by the city, the developer has agreed to complete the construction of and maintain the roadway on the leased property between the proposed gate location and the private property line. You can see on the screen a picture of where the proposed gate is to be located if approved. And then there's another picture that kind of shows where the private property line would be just south of that, where you can start seeing the subdivision of the land. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Michael Gordon is also available to answer any questions that you might have with the developer.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Do any members of the council have any questions for Ms. Gary?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Can you tell me, is there going to be somebody at that gate 24 hours?
Mr. Gordon, can you answer that?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Yes, there will be, it will be a manned gate there 24 hours a day. Not initially, until obviously there are homes there and residents living there. It would be more of a construction presence the first year or two until residents are there, but long term, yeah, it would be a 24-hour manned gate.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question. And if there isn't a manned person at the gate, is there going to be a key code then? Would there be a key code to allow those homeowners down there? I'm just trying to understand, because this is a public road of how that is going to work for the general public, that it's accessible to everyone?
Yes, so there will also be a whole gate control system with keypads, card readers, key fob, sensors, and vehicles. So yes, if for some reason there wasn't a guard there at the time, it would be accessible to residents.
One more question. So if the general public, if somebody doesn't have a home down there, doesn't have a keypad number, doesn't have a card, they won't be able to access that road?
Correct. So this request is to pull, the gate was proposed to be down, just down the hill, right along the property line, just down from the blue mark there on the screen where it says proposed gate location. It would have been down at the bottom of a fairly steep embankment, right on the property line. So the request is to bring it up the hill, and for multiple reasons, as Ms. Gary alluded, it, there's some safety concerns with one, driving down that hill in a public roadway and then approaching the gate and having to stop. Secondly, to be able to turn around, it's a fairly short stretch of roadway, and there really is nowhere for the public to go. So yes, it would be gated there for residents, visitors, obviously, of residents and of the community, and that would happen just further up the hill than down at the property line.
Yes.
I'm trying to see this whole, I've been down there. I'm just trying to view it in my head, looking at this map. That, where that gate is located, that won't stop where the new marina in the ramps will be, right? Nobody will have to go through that gate to get to there, right?
Correct, correct. So the parkway is above that, that loops down and over to the marina, the whole public parkway portion. This is the little offshoot branch that provides access solely to the subdivision. And so no, this won't impede any public traffic to the remainder of the city's property or down to the marina.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So do you see that, Councilmember Lynn, from the roadway, that's the parkway that gets us into the Arizona State Park? That's wide open to public access. So, and then in return, they're proposing that they will then maintain that stretch of roadway going forward, so that will not be a responsibility of the city going forward?
Mr. Mayor, a question?
Yes. Councilmember Dolan?
The section to the left and the right of that, what now would be private road, is technically city property. Is it, am I correct?
Going down, as Mr. Gordon explained in the picture that's on the screen, basically where that yellow ends is the bottom of a hill, and that's where it turns into private.
Okay, so the dotted line there is the switch over to the private land?
Yes.
Because in the city plan, with the city leased land on that little triangle there to the left and the whole right, does that, I guess my question is, what would go in that mid, that triangle section right there? And is there an access issue if the city's putting something in there in the public land right there?
Yeah, so there, where that, the proposed gate location, the blue box with the arrow, that's where the new duty station is going to go. That area that's in the triangle, as I'm trying to see, would not be impacted by where the duty station is.
No, but that's city, that's city, that's city triangle there, but it doesn't impede on anything we'd put in there in the future as part of the overall development?
Yes.
Okay. Correct. Mayor, I can add to that if you would like.
Yeah, please.
Correct. And first of all, that triangle area is very steep, like topography there is going to probably be pretty preventative of the city ever doing much there unless it was like a hiking trail or some lookout type areas. And the only real accessible location to that area would be off of the parkway. In fact, to the left of the blue arrow, you see there's almost like a little approach illustrated off of the parkway.
Okay, I see what you mean now.
Yeah, so if the city, yes, the city would still have access to that. They could do something there, and if they did, they would access it from the parkway, because most of that land is up high along the parkway, and then it drops off really steep down towards the property line of the subdivision.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from any of the members of the council before we open the public hearing? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
Yes, Ms. Gary, can you tell us again the reason that they moved this up? I was listening, but I don't know if I heard you correctly. It's basically just so that if there's big boats coming down there, that they won't do a turnaround down there? That's some reason for moving it up?
That was one reason, just so avoiding having people go down that steeper hill down to the bottom and having to turn around because there's nowhere for the public to go. And Michael also kind of added in just the safety issue of having to go down the hill and stopping at the gate.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that road doesn't lead to anything but the private development.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I can just kind of summarize the situation. So the request came from the developer to move that gate to that location, and to that point, if that gate was where the original location, you'd have vehicles that would go down that road, see a gate, and they had no business in the private gated community with private streets, then they'd have a difficult time pulling a U-turn or otherwise to get back up on the parkway. So in return for moving the gate, then what the city realizes in return is that the developer is going to complete the construction of that stretch of road. They're going to pay for that, and more importantly, from the city's perspective, that they've agreed to maintain that road in perpetuity.
And just to clarify, it's going to, it is, it's going to be put in as a private road, and it stays a private road. So we're not talking about being a city road. It's after that gate, it is a private road, so it's not city.
Access on that road, so that's the parkway. If you follow it down from 95 all the way down, you get down to the, where the state park amenities will eventually be at. If you're taking a left onto that road, that is a, that's a private road in a gated community with private streets.
And again, the topography is kind of hard to see on this picture we see here, but it's a steep hill. So that'd be difficult with boat trailers and those types of things.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Lane?
If I can just give a little perspective from somebody that's done hours and hours and hours and hours of traffic control. This gate really benefits the public because having it down at the bottom, if somebody with a boat went down there and they get to the gate, the first thing they're going to say is, well, why didn't you put the gate at the top of the hill so I didn't have to drive all the way down here, and now I don't have any way to turn around? This makes this easier on the public. Why didn't you move the gate up there? So we're actually seeing, foreseeing that there could be issues down the road, and it makes it easier for the public, the way I, the way I understand it. It makes it easier for the public that way they don't go down that road, and now they're stuck, and you got to clear all the traffic out, try to back somebody up the road because they can't turn around, and it would cause a logistical nightmare. By putting the gate up there, it stops all those problems before they ever happen.
And it doesn't hurt that we don't have to pay for it or the ongoing construction either.
Well, that's always a plus.
Yes.
When a private developer is willing to pay for the road, that's even better.
Yeah, and it would eliminate some confusion, I think, to the public, because as was discussed, if that was open and you were turned down in there, you wouldn't be able to go very far, first of all. You'd be going down a fairly steep embankment towards that wash, and there's nowhere to go. There's no, there really isn't anything down there that will be available to the public or developed by the city. So I think it helps eliminate some confusion, keeps everybody focused on staying on the parkway, going to the marina, going to whatever other city amenities are developed by the city in the future.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. We will open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in the public attendance, but we did receive one item via email at cityclerk@LHCaz.gov. So Ms. Williams, if you could read that into the record, please?
One written public comment was received on Tuesday, July 28 at 8:54 AM. Subject line is Havasu Rivera. "As a taxpaying citizen of Lake Havasu City, I am concerned that a gate is being built on a city-paid built street for the Havasu development. I am addressing the cost that taxpayers paid for the portion of the street that will be behind the gates. The development needs to reimburse the city for that portion of the street. Submitted by Maureen Morris."
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And that was the only public comment that we had, but I believe her concerns were addressed that the developer is paying for that roadway and all future maintenance of that roadway, so it's not, not public monies that are going for that. I'll now close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy, motion?
I move to adopt, approve Amendment Number Two to Lake, to Havasu Rivera Development Agreement.
I move to adopt uh approve amendment number two to Lake Hav- to Havasu Riviera Development Agreement with Raging River Management Corporation.
Second, we have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gary, and Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You too. Our new uh dividers give us not as much room, so it's it takes me a minute to get back to everything. So yeah, and there is a lot of echo too. We have new microphones, a lot of echo in this this chamber we're in, but. All right, moving on to item 8.4, approve amendment number one to engineering professional services agreement for backup water source exploratory well drilling, well design and construction project with Jacobs Engineering Group. Uh, Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, uh, mayor of council.
As long as they can hear you on channel four, I think, is.
Not hearing it.
Oh, we have a bad microphone.
All right, we're, I, uh, Steve is coming to to the rescue for us. Very easy. Thank you, Steve.
Send me a bill. I'll try this again. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, uh, mayor members of council, uh, good evening. It's very nice to be here in person. Uh, we've got some very important projects to talk about, so I appreciate the accommodation. This first one tonight, as the mayor indicated, is an amendment to a a previous agreement. The original agreement consisted of exploratory well drilling to try to determine the best location to uh drill two new vertical wells to enhance our backup water supply. Um, that was phase one of the project. These sites have been selected. This amendment will take us into phase two of this project, which is the actual design and construction of well casings at two locations, as well as the design and construction of the actual uh pumps and electrical systems and the other facilities that make these wells work, as well as a pipeline to connect the wells to the water treatment plant. It's it's a large scope of work. It actually spans approximately 18 months. Um, we've got a few slides here. Mr. Mark Elliott with the Jacobs Engineering Group is here and we're going to go through some slides to explain the history, how we got here and what uh phase two consists of, what the next steps are. And then we'll both be here to answer some questions.
Great, thank you.
I present Mr. Mark Elliott.
Thanks, Greg. Honorable mayor and council, Mark Elliott, I'm a principal engineer with Jacobs Engineering Group. Uh, it's a pleasure to present this exciting backup water supply project. As some background, in 2018, uh, the city completed an important water master plan update, which looked at long-range water supply and forecasted demands for the city into the future. Critical in that master plan was identification of water supply reliability. And we developed a 10-year capital program for the water uh program. Critical in that is developing backup water supply in the north. Those are part of that capital program. Your water supply. Your water supply is groundwater from various sources. In the north part of the city, we have what's called the North Well Field. And on the island, we have groundwater uh developed from a horizontal collector well. These wells provide water to your water treatment plant. The pictures here in the lower right is the horizontal collector well. Interestingly, it's one of the largest capacity collector wells in the United States. It's a primary feed for your city. To the north, the North Well Field used to be your main supply of water. The collector well is about 20 years old. Since that has become the primary, the North Well Field is only used for emergency backup water. That well field has aged in the past 20 years. In fact, some of this infrastructure is 40 to 50 years old and is in need of replacement. The importance of this project is this collector well at about 20 years of age now is in the is in need of maintenance and it's important that we have the ability to take that out of service so we can perform the right maintenance and keep that in service. So the solution is to develop new water supply in the North Well Field with two new wells. This is a picture of the exist- one of the existing wells located near the water treatment plant and a and a picture of the corridor in the North Well Field where other existing wells are located. The phase one project, we recently wrapped up in June of this year. And as Greg mentioned, the goal was to develop two new wells. Our approach was to explore five potential sites in the city. From north to south, the the graphic to the right shows the sites we actually considered, including one at the Public Works site, your water treatment plant, an old abandoned well, the yacht club in the parking lot. And the city was successful in getting a permit to explore a well at state parks. Each of these locations was explored. Another part of the project is to develop a conveyance pipeline to send this water to the water treatment plant for treatment. Our exploratory drilling occurred in the spring. Each of these sites, we averaged about 10 days of work and the contractor drilled about 500 feet deep with the goal of developing uh water supply. This is a picture of two of the operations, one at well three and in the lower right is at the state park site. In addition, we collected uh very detailed lithology, including gravel, sand layers, really understanding uh the conditions underneath, um developed geophysical logs. And this data was very critical for our hydrogeologists to analyze the potential production capacity of the these well sites. That work was wrapped up and it's recommended that the from the engineering work that we move forward with two sites, uh, one at the water treatment plant and one at the Public Works Building. The site to the north in the upper left is actually near the parking lot of the Public Works Yard. The benefit of these sites are they appear to yield similar capacities as the previous wells in the North Well Field and they're close to existing infrastructure, which minimizes pipeline conveyance costs. And the city controls the property, which allow for efficient uh construction of these projects. As I mentioned, the project does include a conveyance pipeline to the water treatment plant. The good news about the well at the water treatment plant site is we have very little pipeline. The Public Works, we have a couple of pipeline options we'll be refining in the design phase to convey water from that well into the water treatment plant. So next steps in schedule, uh, before you today is amendment number one. We will move forward with the design of uh well casings. We will issue a construction contract that will be publicly bid for a contract to install two casings, which is a um which is a steel casing that will be installed about five, 550 feet into the ground. We will observe the construction of that. And then once that's completed, we'll collect data, pump capacity data from that casing. Then we will move forward and actually design the well, the motor, the electrical, the site work and the pipeline as well. That will become a package that the city will also advertise and bid. And we will monitor the construction of the wells at that time. And lastly, we'll assist the city in startup and commissioning of these two wells. The project will extend over about 18 months and in the end, um, our goal is to provide additional redundant water supply for the city so we can move forward with the maintenance of the collector well. In closing, um, it's been a pleasure working, as always, with your city staff. We work closely with engineering operations. It really is truly a collaborative effort. Uh, we feel like an extension of your staff and enjoy the leadership in your Public Works Department. So thank you and be glad to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott, we appreciate it. Uh, with that, uh, do any members of the council have any questions?
You would be disappointed if I didn't have questions about a well drilling project, wouldn't you, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Groh.
Before I ask a question, I just want to say this is a really well-laid out uh drilling program. I was very impressed. I I went through this with some amount of detail. The questions we're going to ask might seem a little bit, uh, I don't know, technical. Just take in mind that I used to be a roughneck, so I'm not a geologist, so I may ask this incorrectly. I'm I'm used to actually spudding in and drilling, but all the heavy-duty geophysical and logging and all that fancy stuff you guys do, I'm not as well-versed with that. So my first question was, and and I'll try to run through them quick because they're not really big questions. Um, we're going to take her down to TD of 550, but we're going to do uh pilot hold of 600. I'm just curious, why the 50-foot difference? I I didn't know that.
Councilmember Groh, I don't think um um Mark Elliott meant that we're going to drill to 600 feet and only uh install a casing to 550. The the wells will vary in depth and in general, they're going to be 500, 550 feet deep.
Okay, so to hit the formation where we're going to have the water, it could be between 550 and 6, that makes sense. Next question was in terms of the casing design. Uh, so on the casing design, we're gonna uh we're gonna run uh 36-inch conductor casing. So that's at the top, we run that down 20 feet. And then from 200 to wherever we TD between 550 and 6, we're going to run uh stainless steel casing.
Correct.
Yeah, with with the a V-wire on it, so we can produce that whatever formation we hit. What are we going, what are we doing between 20 and 200? What's that look like? What size is that? I'm just curious.
I believe that is, that's just the steel casing itself. Um, it doesn't have any screens in it. And the final casing size, my understanding is we're going with 20-inch.
Okay, yeah, they usually taper. You start with your conductor, you get smaller and then you get smaller when you get down to production. I was just curious, that's not really important, I was just curious. Then you may have explained it in your presentation, which was my final question. In the drilling program, you were going to take lithographic, uh, well, soil samples, if you will. Uh, I was the guy who used to go do that for you because we know what circulation time is and we know where we are in terms of depth, how many sticks we got per gram uh and where we are in the drilling process. So you're going to do it every 10 feet or where there's a lithographic change. But you've already done some extensive sampling in that area, is that correct? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, what kind of, what kind of downhill logging we're going to do that, are we using uh? Uh, yeah, I'm accustomed to, you know, schlumberg shape comes in and they put all the wireline logging stuff downhill after we hit TD because we know where we're going. Uh, are we doing uh live uh uh logs in the drill collar? Or are we going to just uh go on once we get to expected TD?
Uh, I believe when we're out there managing the drilling, we're going to be collecting this, you know, all this data live. Um, it's something I can get some more information from you, from our hydro- hydrogeologists.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious. And then finally, my last question is, uh, we're going to bring a rotary table mud drilling rig in. And I noticed in the picture that you're using a single. My assumption is you'll use the single for the drilling itself or will you bring the double?
Um, that we'd have to get back to you. That's, we'll be developing a performance spec, um, our hydrogeologists. That will be part of the the bid phase for the casing and that's where we'll get into the details of that.
Okay, will you invite me out for spudding so I can take a picture?
Always.
All right, that's it. That's my question, I told you it'd be easy. I think it's a great drilling program, I'm 100% behind it. This represents three and a half years of pounding on tables for me to finally get to the point where we're getting these wells drilled. So I'm really excited and I want to thank, uh, well, not just you, but I want to thank Mr. Frosley, his team, our consultants and everybody who's worked so hard. I want to thank the city manager, I want to thank the city council, I want to thank everybody for getting this done because without water, nothing else matters.
Thank you, Councilmember Groh. Is there any other comments or or questions from uh members of the council? All right, this is a a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in public attendance and we also did not receive any public comments via the email that we're accepting public comments on, at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov. So I'll close the public hearing. Are there any final questions or a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan? Yes.
I move to approve the amendment number one to the engineering professional services agreement for backup water source exploratory well drilling, well design and construction project with Jacobs Engineering Group Incorporated.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Councilmember Lynn. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frosley. And again, this was a priority of the city for a long time and I'm glad to see it moving forward, so so thank you. All right, uh, moving on to item 8.5 is award agreement for professional services for the S dash 1C dash 24 water storage tank replacement and expansion to Atkins. Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bear with me one second. Yes, thank you, appreciate the introduction. Um, this project is part of the approved CIP and part of our annual water tank replacement program. Uh, it's it's, uh, after all these years, I still don't fully understand the nomenclature for this tank numbering system, but this tank is tank S 1C 24. Um, it's, the project is actually to design a tank, develop a construction document so where we can go out and issue a a project for a public bid. Uh, the master plan that was referenced in the last presentation for water recommended that this tank actually increase in size from 1 million to 1.5 million uh to help with uh fire flows in the area. We're a little lacking. Uh, design schedule, it's a six-month contract. So that puts us in February. Here's a little map uh loca- uh showing the location of all of our tanks. The big blue dot is tank 1C, which is near the dome churches uh on Jamaica. There's an aerial view of it. One of those tanks is missing right there, the one uh labeled 1C dash 24, that's been demolished already. This is to design the replacement at 1.5 million gallons. Again, part of our approved CIP, uh, asking for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Frosley? All right, hearing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none in the public, uh, or that's joining us here um live this evening and we also did not receive any from uh email, again, taking comments at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov uh one hour prior to the meeting. So I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy?
I move to award the agreement for professional service for the S 1C 24 water storage tank replacement and expansion to Atkins.
I'll second. Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember McCoy and a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our last public hearing. Item 8.6 is approve a sole source purchase of a full train membrane replacement and onsite six cassette refurbishment for the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant from Suez Water Technology.
SWIZ.
SWIZ? Yeah, I should have asked before, uh, Water Technology and Solutions, uh, Mr. Frosley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, mayor and members of council, this is scheduled maintenance for the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um, it it's part of the filtration component of the treatment process. You can see on the screen, uh, that's one cassette, uh, it's a filter. It's one of six filters in each of our treatment trains. The typical lifespan of this filter is only approximately seven years. And in our climate, we even struggle a little more getting them to seven years. This one is approaching seven years. If we get approval tonight, they'll start um manufacturing this for us and we'll be very close to the seven-year lifespan once we install them. We install them ourselves with the with the help of two representatives from Suez. I've I've got to warn you, I've got a couple of pictures, they're not pleasant, but it does show the condition of these that what you're looking at in this picture is a clean one.
Yeah.
That one's six and a half years old. This one, if you look over here on the right-hand side, I don't know if you can see my cursor, that's a zip tie. The heat has taken some of our fasteners and disintegrated them, so these these definitely need to be replaced. Uh, this is how we track the permeability of the water going through these membranes. You can see it's it's dropped off over time. When the permeability drops off, the pumps that push the water- When the permeability drops off, the pumps that push the water through have to work much harder to get the same amount of water cleaned. And this is what we use that water for at the north plant. We irrigate the golf course at the, at the refuge, as well as send it to town to irrigate the golf courses in town when, when we need it. So again, this is in our operating budget. It's been approved. It's proactive maintenance, which is something I'm pushing very hard for in Public Works. And we're asking for your approval for this expenditure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Frosley. And just for clarification, we irrigate these golf courses for a fee, so there's a cost of order.
Yes, sell the water.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, is there any questions of any members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none in live attendance, but we also were accepting public comment via email at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov, and we did not receive any public comments on this item either, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Dolan?
Now that we've come full circle and learned where the water comes from, where we put it, and what we do with it at the end, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve the sole source purchase of a full train membrane replacement and onsite six cassette refurbishment for the North Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant from Suez Water Technologies and Solutions in the amount of $491,734, and to authorize the city manager to execute the Suez membrane replacement proposal.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Dolan and a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frosley. Moving on to item nine is the current events. Are there any council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
I would just like to report on our Go Lake Havasu, which is our Convention of Visitors Bureau. We haven't actually met, but Terrence has been sending information to us about what's been going on with that. And he has gotten some revenue information that I think is very important because of the COVID-19, that the revenue for, has roughly dropped $110,000 from March 15th through May 15th, but it's starting to increase closer to the pre-COVID numbers, which is a great thing to hear.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Are there any other council committee reports? All right, moving on to item 10, which is our final call to the public. Would anyone like to address the City Council during the call to the public? Seeing none, oh. Yeah. Oh, yeah, please, yeah, come on up and just state your name for the record.
Thank you. A wonderful speaker. Some of the faces are a little grabbered from over here.
Is that the green button on?
On-site question.
Yes. It's a green?
Okay, there we go. I'm here on behalf of Martin Navalas, the owner of the No Name Public House. Earlier, I would have made comment, but it wasn't so nice and quick. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce him to yourselves as you had passed the liquor licensing as well. Mr. Navalas is grateful for the opportunity to be a minority business owner in Lake Havasu City and further the great tradition of being the oldest restaurant with license 12 in Lake Havasu City. Started in 1967, the history of the Poorhouse, which is presently operating under the No Name Public House, is a true Lake Havasu treasure and respected by the community as a great eatery with 54 years in business. The Poorhouse, No Name, has never been in violation, as he knows of, of not selling at least 40% food. So he's very honored to be here, and, look, he gets a 4.5-star rating plus on all the social media platforms. Mr. Navalas himself has the distinction of having served a great country with honor in the United States Marine Corps for over seven years. He's a patriotic American, a minority business owner, and a proud father to a 15-year-old young man with special needs. He's had a birthday party for his son in Atlanta, Georgia, and couldn't be here, but he wanted me to say thank you to the Honorable Mayor and Council and show his appreciation for you passing his liquor license to move forward. And he wants to thank you all for your time and leadership during the most troubling times and unprecedented. COVID-19. So that's where we stand. Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your comments. Did we catch your name?
My name's Dandovich.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you for being here. All right, would anyone else like to address the City Council during the call to the public? And again, we are receiving public comment for a call to the public and public hearings via email one hour prior to our public meetings at cityclerk@lhcaz.gov, and we have not received any items for this call to the public. So I'll now call, close the call to the public. Item 11 is future meetings. Our next meeting is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., and that will be a regular meeting. And then on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m., we'll have a regular meeting. Item 12 is future discussion items. Do any members of the council have any future discussion items? No? All right, item 13 is a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, a second from Councilmember McCoy. It was good to see everybody here in public today, so thank you. I'm glad we were able to do that. Be kind, we are adjourned.